All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, February eleventh. Like to call the meeting to order. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Quin, present.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Colonel.
Here.
Okay. Um, there's no invocation for today. If you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comment. There anyone on? Okay, um, seeing none. I have, uh, one addition to the agenda. I have a disposal order. The, for the county clerk. So I'd like to add that. During our consent agenda, please. Um, so with that addition, I would look for an approval of the agenda with that addition.
So moved, second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. All right. So let's just go ahead and do that. Uh, the consent agenda, we have the commission meeting minutes from last week. Um, February fourth. Did you guys have an opportunity to read those?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right, I have, um, a disposal order twenty twenty-five dash two. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County do hereby order Susan Carrigan, County Clerk, to dispose of records listed below. In accordance with K A R fifty-three dash two dash. One nineteen and or K S A forty-five dash four oh six and amendments there too. Um, if you want to look at those and then I will call for a motion.
You've been busy.
Thoughtfully busy. Not just.
No, yeah. Back to seventy-nine on some of this.
Okay, one for motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Three to zero. So we have the finance director. Review with payroll, credit cards and expenses.
Morning.
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 Um, so payroll this time is an average payroll total hundred ninety-six thousand, one eighty-seven sixty-three. Um, there was nothing out of the ordinary, out of the ordinary without. Um, only credit card we had this time was three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. It was for the I T department. It was a purchase order that was approved last week. Um, for go-to assist for two hundred and fifty licenses. So it was put on. The credit, paid for with the credit card and now I've paying the bill. Um, so then this week's A P run for tomorrow to twelve. Is. Seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two ninety-eight, seventy-six. Um, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, two seventy-one, sixty-six of that total. As a closeout grant. Payable to Amberwell. That is the last of it. It'll take that balance to zero. That was a grant that the state of Kansas awarded Amberwell, but the county is a sub recipient of. So we had to hold the money, did all the paperwork with it and just kind of be the, the middleman.
Pass through.
Yeah. For, for the hospital. So, um, that, that'll be taken care of and we'll complete the paperwork out. Um, I think it's April, by the end of April for that. So their, their staff is really good to work with. Um, and their finance team. So we, we handled it pretty well. Um, forty-one thousand is a, a reissue check to Schwab Eaton. Um, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, would be a, a purchase order that Joe is going to have approved to consumer oil for the fuel bid. Um, and eighty-seven thousand of that was lease purchase payments, uh, that we approved last week. So I know it's a, it looks like a large total or is a large total rather, but it's several things that we knew was coming that has already been approved.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Comlets, Commissioner Campbell.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Nolan.
I had a area agency on A G meeting last Thursday at Hiawatha, which I attended. Um, still working on trying to get a building started, so. In Hiawatha, so it's. Starting to get. Close, maybe groundbreaking, maybe in March or April.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things. Uh, first of all, attended the chamber banquet on Saturday evening. Uh, great job to all the chamber board members. It was a really good, good night. Nice to see everyone from the community come together. And I have my first chamber board meeting as a guest this Wednesday. So excited to kind of join in on that and see, um, about. Uh, supporting their mission and, and being part of the chamber board, um, as a county representative. So. Um, also with the weather that they're calling for, um, we have an internal process here of, of how we will, um. Make the decision whether or not we will close the courthouse and some of the non-essential, um, offices and that will be, um, put out on social media if, if. That's the case, but, um, just wanted to notify you guys of that. Um, no petitions or proclamations, um, unfinished business, uh, none really added to this agenda that we talked about. So the first thing is commissioners, we wanted to follow up with Mr. Henderson on the county lake sale. You had sent out another email.
I did. I have received absolutely no, uh, no response from that. We had, I can't remember the name of, uh, Jay Haddix through Mid, Midland, Midwest.
I have to pull it up.
The, the group that we had talked.
Yeah.
Well, what is it?
Midwest Land.
Midwest Land Group. No, I, I don't. I think we have scheduled, is it next week? We have them scheduled to come back.
No, I think we were waiting to see.
Oh.
Um, yeah, it's.
I think the next step then is probably to get.
With him.
Uh, to get them in and to work out details if you're, uh, wanting to move forward to say home when county deals on a. Commission structure and. Fees, expenses.
I have some questions about that. At what point do we, I think it's, I don't think it's widely known that. We may sell it or intend to sell it. Uh, I think we need to kind of have a strategy. I don't think it's the best way to wait until. Right before you're ready to sign on the dotted line before you make an announcement or proclamation that you could, I mean, so I. I, uh, what do we see as a strategy for us to kind of let it be known? Do we want to have a public meeting on that? Before we get too far or, I mean, I, I don't know, but beans, uh, I mean, it's in my. District and I know that there will be locals that are opposed to it, but I don't want to leave them thinking that. They're being ignored or that it's going to be a surprise. So. I, I think at some point we need to. Put it out there. I don't know whether it's a press release saying that. We're looking at the potential to sale of it. Um, I, how does that work and what does it look like?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um.
And what's the timing? I, I don't know what the appropriate timing is. I just don't want it to get. Too far down the line before people would even have a chance to talk to us about it.
I would definitely encourage you, if you know those constituents around there, let them know like, hey, and we've been talking about it. Meeting after meeting, um, beyond that of how to get something out. I mean, I'm not opposed to, I mean, it's not a hidden, uh. Thing by any means. So if we want to put something out, like the county is. Going to or I, right now for me, it's still fact finding, right? Like we know what we think we can get out of it. We still need to negotiate commissions. And figure out, you know, okay, also for us three to say, these proceeds will then go to what, right? Like, so that we have a plan. Um.
I think that's a good thing. Uh, I, I think at first, I think. I would like to see something public because that way, because I can reach out to everybody I know, but there's maybe five or six. Uh, times that many that could be, you know, not knowing that there's anything. Because people don't normally view us looking for, for something like that. I mean, that it's, we've never tried to sell the. Uh, lake or that property. So it's not even on the radar screen to look for, and unless somebody approaches them directly, they don't know. So I would like something that would be. A, a countywide announcement or something and that we can point to saying, you know, we've, we've attempted to kind of let the public know what. What may happen. Cause you know, I don't know where exactly. I mean. We're, this is all going to shake down, but I think at some point, to be fair to everybody, we need to have a public announcement.
Right. Help me understand because I'm trying to remember back, um. The difference of this. Yeah, and Senior Village. We, did we put, we put something out of like potentially selling with the picture?
To the paper and to the, to care.
Okay, so we need to continue with probably the same, same way.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as opposition, because we did receive opposition with the senior village as well, um. To me of just knowing that, you know, we've done, we know, and that's, that's. That's the million dollar question, right? What we know here on the inside, sitting at the table, looking at financials, knowing the hurdles that we have. Being able to. Verbalize that to the community so they know like. This is what this is going to help with. Like we have a need, we have limited resources. This could go on the tax roll. Like we also have hundreds of acres tax exempt, right? So like the whole. Bullet points of, of the why and being able to explain the why and maybe the bullet points go in why we're contemplating it, right? So it's easy. When you look at the checklist, you're like. This many acres tax exempt to go on the tax roll like this, this, this potential income to go to. Closing the gap on the facility or infrastructure needs of pipes and bridges and all the things that, you know, just telling the story. Basically kind of like, do you remember at the Kansas Government Day, Osage County did the same thing when they were building their new jail? It was like an informational thing, like this is why we need it and this is what we're thinking and definitely come with opposition because perspective is good, right? But like, this is the way we're viewing it at the moment, knowing the challenges, you know, that we have and. I like it. So maybe we work on putting something together, a one pager or something. Um.
Okay.
Is that fine with you?
Yeah.
So. To your point, we could set Drew up to come back. To us to nego, still negotiate what the commission, so we have more information. But in hand and hand with that, put together a one pager to put out social media or the website to say, hey, this is what commissioners are thinking about. Want. Want to make sure everybody's aware. Is that good?
So do you wait? A week after the information is put out and then decide whether or not you need a meeting, a special meeting for that because I'm. On board with the letter or the. You know, putting the information out like you're talking about. Uh. And you could do radio. Newspaper, but would it be better just to? Send a letter or is that not, is that too expensive to send a letter to the county folks?
Everybody in the county?
Yeah, it'd be expensive. Yeah, it'd be like eleven thousand parcels.
Okay. So you're, so then, then you do the public, but you're still not going to get everybody. If it's not, everybody takes the newspaper or listens to care. You're going to get a smattering of folks. Word of mouth, do we put it on the website? I assume we.
Probably, yeah.
The letter we're talking about, the explanation, that goes on the website, but even so, not everybody looks at that. So.
I would do a press release, uh, so it, because it would be mentioned, I think, uh, something like K N Z A and the Globe would both be interested in a story like that or, you know, a, a print.
Social media is a good outlet too.
Social media. Yeah, newspaper and radio and then that suffices. You know. To get the word out. And. On the latter of the statement. You know, make sure that we say that we do want. We, you know, we want input.
Absolutely.
Made it, make it clear that we want input on this. And then at that point, if, if, you know, we can offer a what? Comment, comment at, at one of our meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Would that suffice? Just basically.
Yeah, we'd have it as a topic at a meeting if we had something like that.
By that time we would have talked with. Midwest.
Yeah.
And those folks. And so we could have feedback with those. With the opposition. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. Okay, so. Are we fine with bringing Drew or at least having the finance director negotiate what that commission structure would look like?
I think, yeah.
Okay.
I think we need to get ahead of that because. People are going to want to know.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, and then we can work on a one pager of like what bullet points we feel need to be on there. Okay. Like it. And then also have, um. The, um. Uh, Joe sent us that lease, so we'll want to share that with him as well. So they know those agreements.
Is that the only one we got?
Yeah, because the hay, we never had lease, right? For the people harvesting it.
No, they just. They were doing what they were doing, but that's the only one I could find yesterday.
Okay. So if you know, on the, oh, sorry, uh, on the sale is that once we get. To the point that we think we're going to go through with the sale, we're going to have to plat those roads and get all of that work done because the roads through there are not. Platted.
Then that would be probably on our end to take care of.
I'm sure that would be, yeah. Yeah, I. And I don't know when, I don't think they're really wanting. To do that until they know it's like very likely that it would happen. So, uh, again, it's just something to keep in the back of our minds that we don't want to forget about it.
Yep, we'll make it know. Perfect.
The guy that would, would know about that.
All right.
With a potential, uh, sale of the county lake about plating those roads, how long would that take to, to do that?
You're going to have to get a surveyor in who's going to locate them and then write a description for the easement. And so I, my guess is it's going to take you three, six months to get somebody to do that.
I mean, that can be contingent. Also.
Yeah.
That we're. Falling through. So we don't have to wait six months, but it's contingent upon roads.
On the sale.
Mm-hmm.
On the sale, yeah.
But we can talk through all those details when we put the one pager together.
Okay. Is there a certain time you want to visit about that? Or?
Um, well, so.
I didn't know how fast you were kind of wanting to get it. Cause like, if you want like some budgetary figures, I can get you.
Yeah.
That.
I think the sooner the better, like knowing like the overall view. Making sure our acreage numbers are correct. You know, all the things that the public, if, you know, hey. We just talked to Holly last week on the exempt amount, you know, and it's like, okay, if we take this to this, what does that look like? Which I had asked her about that and she thought she could give us an estimation of. You know, that.
Tax number, number.
Yeah. Because that was something Senior Village, remember at the Farm Bureau thing, they ask how many dollars of taxes that's now generating because it was an exempt facility and now it's. Upward of what was twenty-eight thousand or roughly? So. Um, yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Um, are the, any K E S folks coming in person or via Zoom?
I understand that they're coming in person.
Okay, do we have any information on that or they're bringing it?
They're bringing it.
Okay. Have a little time just to fill in, um. Susan had sent the commissioners that, um, information for. That we got from the Kansas Department of Commerce with, uh. Potential leads for business recruitment. Did you guys see that? Just Kansas is looking for like all those.
Yeah.
Uh, I had originally sent it to Mark of like, hey, do you want to get with the city on? Possibly looking at what that looks like, but then the more we talked, it's like, it's probably a better fit for E D A G if that's something you would want to take to your meeting. Of like, hey, and I'm sure the city folks got the same thing, but just so we're all on the same page of like. If there's an active recruiting effort in Acheson County for business, we're all on board, right? Like. We're all.
I just don't know how to take it and run with it.
No, absolutely. And I think their group would probably be a good starting point of. That's.
No, that's I. I thought that exactly. When I read through it, I thought this, the city's probably aware of this, but it would be good, a good discussion to have and, uh.
Because right, that would be like some financial planning to like bring someone here and when you have these incentives and I don't know how. Like I, I would totally be willing to help, but I just don't know what all that would entail from us, I guess.
Kind of like the Rose program.
Right.
I mean, we're. Aware, we welcome that, whereas we don't have the expertise, the, that, I mean, just like what, what it look like.
It's like if you help us get to what you need, like help me, help you type of thing, you know, I will be willing to provide anything, but sometimes just a partnership or.
Oh, the next week. Okay, perfect. Yeah. Nope, that's fine. Um.
Yeah, there were some minimums on that that. You know, almost made it look like it was kind of out of our league.
Uh, right.
You know, uh.
I thought that too.
But a little better explanation might. Open, open that up to us. I, I don't know, but, uh. Any, is there any idea when the airport is supposed to be complete? Does anybody have an idea?
No.
That's something else that I can ask at E D A G.
And I meant to ask last week too, because I've had people asking me, what's going on with the airport and I don't have enough data.
Oh, well. Most, the most recent issue that I have heard that's going on is that to get out of line. Uh, the. Natural gas, Williams Natural Gas Pipeline. Uh, had to be relocated and it changed the scope about a million and a half bucks and.
No.
And so it's taking time.
Well, my point was that. That. That may open us up to. Businesses like the one with that. Uh, mailing described.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I, yeah.
Having, having that.
Hi, James.
Better access from, from folks, for folks, that might help. So.
Awesome. Okay, so we have, uh, Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, Sports Complex Inspection.
Yeah, so, um, Pat, and I really asked Pat for help too, because I didn't have hardly any of these transactions noted down. And so he had put together a spreadsheet which I forwarded to you guys of all the different projects in twenty-four and potentially maybe in twenty-five. Uh, between. Um, U S D three seventy-seven and Rec Commission and, and all of that. Uh, so. Um. Also got an email from. The Chairman and President of Exchange. Uh, because I was kind of looking into some of the sports complex balances. And I can forward this email to you. He said basically in the three accounts, the. Account that collects the, the monthly tax revenue, the account that holds all of the remaining bond payments. And the account that has the early redemption that possibly pay it off early. Has a, the total is about eight hundred and eighty thousand. And that's in addition to. Um, the nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand that's in the maintenance account. So. There's two, two different amounts there.
What was the second amount?
Uh, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand. He said, the reason we bring it up to your attention is because the payment table shows a remaining bond balance of only four hundred and seventy-one thousand. After we make the February bond payment. So it seems like the county could pay the bonds off at any time with the funds out of the early redemption fund. Plus some use of other funds. So there's other money there if more projects needed to be done. But that would be up to the county if. Wanted to pay them off early. So I'm going to forward this to you guys and Pat.
Okay, and real quick, the four hundred thousand that we, um. Gave to A S A F and then a hundred to. I think it was a hundred to three seventy-seven last year.
Yeah.
Did that came out of the other money fund or not the maintenance or did it come out of the maintenance?
Was supposed to come out of the management operating.
That's what I.
Management and operating reserve fund.
Okay, so what should be the eight eighty?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, the eight eighty would have already had that four hundred or five hundred thousand deducted from it.
Yep.
Okay.
Well.
Well, depends on what time they.
Well, that's what I was wondering. Is it as we approve the purchase orders? Is that how it's being drawn or did we draw it at the beginning?
No, it's not drawn until it's paid out.
Okay.
And I think, um. I, I showed maybe a hundred and thirty thousand was all that had been actually expended, uh, in Acheson. That may not be complete because I was missing a couple of, uh, months of stables and on Effingham, uh. They. Ten thousand dollars, I think, so.
Which at my emergency ma, planning meeting, I saw, um, Andrew Gaddis and I asked him because Ty Wallace was our contact and then he, I believe, retired. So he encouraged me to get ahold of Sabrina Hanky on that and I just remembered, um. That maybe we want to follow up with her on those. To make sure she knows that that money has been. Do we have, I was trying to remember, did they bring us hard copies of their list for those? When we authorized that? Let me see here.
I don't know if it was emailed or if it was, uh. Or if they gave us paperwork on it, but there were several projects.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think they totaled. Over a hundred thousand dollars.
See.
That. Like. The time that the tax would sunset. And if we still have funds. That haven't been expended. In theory, to say that like the, uh, the, the two properties and we wanted to. Not be involved anymore. Could there be? That money attached that when we would, if, if we would hand it over to just say four nine, just for. Could those monies then be? Go with it? I mean, so, I mean, that would make it more attractive if, if some.
So they actually could have something to do.
Yeah, so they wouldn't have immediately an expense. There would be funds that would, they could draw upon to. Tailor it and maybe to how they would need instead of. Us directing where we think it might be. So I, I didn't know whether that would be. Since it's tax dollars, whether that could happen.
That, that may be a question for the bond council that my. My recollection from when we had this discussion, when they did the, when you. Did the modification, a lot is that. Uh, we had to, we had to make the expenditures that we couldn't. That's, that, uh. I don't think it's envisioned by the bond documents that we're going to pay somebody to take the property. So. Uh. But I should sure check with, with Gilmore and Dell and.
Yeah, that, that could be construed that way, but I, it wasn't paying them to take it, but it would be like. The, the end of that, but it would help transition into a private ownership. Or a different ownership.
It's just the fund that follows the property.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, so that would, to me would be.
And you could word it a way that it's specific. This is. Make it funds. Or whatever you could, you know.
Well, I, I'd hate to think that. Okay, we've got so much left and we would, we'd have to spend that. To, to transition into, you know, so then we would look for a project that maybe would be less desirable or I don't know how, that's not correct. Way of putting it, but maybe not as cost effective. Because it would be us making it, trying to get the funds expended and. Because it would be us making it, trying to get the funds expended instead of letting whoever the potential. Entity that would be taking it over would, if it transferred to them, then it would kinda help. Roll it into their production, their maintenance or whatever they needed to be done.
Sorry, I'm printing out. I think I, I was able to find three seventy sevens. Um, so if we do need to get with, and historically it came from Ernie Batista, is he still there?
I believe so.
Okay, good. Just trying to find the ASAF ones real quick, that way we could kinda recap what.
Probably ought to be also carved and copied to the superintendent.
For some reason, I wanna think that they.
Have ASAF.
That they might have brought it as a hard copy.
Think that's.
Which I should have. And that's next week, right?
Yeah.
I just think it's probably good for us to have a, at least an overview this week to walk away from, so we know what to expect next week. Okay, here it is, found it. Let me make a copy of this for you guys.
Good.
All of you, so you have it. And maybe you can scan this in and send it so we all have it like electronically too. Now, I'm just gonna make one more copy. I think there's a sports complex folder. Then I have the three seventy sevens too, I can send you guys. But at least next week when we go through what's been done, um. And we can probably leave, check this versus what. We've allocated. Do you need, like, do we want any other information right now before next week or are you guys good with?
This, just the East Complex, we're not talking with three seventy seven.
So I have three seventy sevens here, I'll, I'll make a copy of those too.
Okay.
Because they came to us twice here, um. December, so they increased it, so this would be the. This would be what we need for three seventy seven. And we should probably reach out to three seventy seven. To ask for an update as well. Where's the contact there? Um, I think it's, it's, so Eric is Batista, is that the superintendent?
No, that's the maintenance. I believe, let me know, email you his email.
Uh, yeah, so we allocated to them and here's a copy of that. A hundred. Yep. And this is, well, this was the list they came to us, um, with so far, like these were their priorities at the moment.
When was?
And I'll just forward you this email to from.
December of twenty two.
Yeah, December sixteenth of twenty two. That should help us with next week's discussion.
These are on the new projects, pay up on the, you know, on the Excel spreadsheet.
So this is in addition to the hundred and. Twenty. Three thousand five hundred, right?
Well, on the first one that we got that, that's clear up at the top, it was estimated one forty five.
Yeah, that, this one's. This one's, um. Four oh nine.
Yes.
This other one is, but they have another. Under twenty three thousand five hundred.
So was that from the initial?
I think so from October, but is that one not legit?
Well, so that's what I was trying to understand because the forty six two ninety three, then they followed up like ten days later with the fifty. Thousand.
Fifty three.
Or yeah, the fifty three thousand.
Yeah, so this is the sixth edition being requested.
Yeah. So, just getting clarity from them will probably be good too, of like. Because the forty six, that initial, the Can-Am was part of that that got amended to the fifty three thousand. And if I remember right, some of the things that they initially asked for ended up being, um. What am I, fundraised? Like, to me, I think that they were saying like some of their dugout stuff was fundraised. By like their ball association and different things, so it'll be nice to understand where they sit with requests and. All right. Do we need any more discussion on sports complex? Okay, thanks for that update, Mark.
Sure.
Okay, Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge, consideration of agreement with Tung's Construction. Phase one culvert replacement. Actually, I'm gonna ask one more question, so real quick to the. To the point, I mean, I guess we don't need to make a decision now of what the banks questioned were to us.
No.
Until after next week and then we can kinda get more information and follow up. Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm giving you. Any answer you need from us today. So. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Okay, this morning I have, uh, the agreement with Tung's Construction to, uh, do the phase one holder. And I mean, they've already signed it, there's three copies need to be signed by the chairperson and the clerk and then they, they need to be dated. One is for engineering swab Eaton, the other one is for Tunks. And this last one will, will go to the clerk, it's at some counties.
Okay. All right. So I would look for a motion to allow the chair and the clerk to sign the Ottawa Road Phase One Culvert. Documents as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent. Of a motion to approve.
So.
I'll second.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Three to zero. You just want me to put my date, the date next to my name?
Right. Well, I've got, I've got it here, I can pass that back to.
Okay.
Okay, and then this wasn't on the agenda, but I have a PO for fuel to consumer. Oil for two hundred and sixty seven thousand four hundred and twenty one dollars and seventy seven cents. And that includes all of Roden Bridge, County Lake, Noxious Weave. It includes, uh, forty three thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars and ten cents from EMS. It's a dive diesel from the transfer station. Which is seven thousand five hundred and ninety eight dollars and then a hundred and fifty gallons, which would be three hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty five cents for IT.
Just to clarify, um, this was broken down in a copy given to us in workshop, so I should have asked for an addition. That we voted on, but I know everybody was in favor of, of passing this.
Right.
So I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order to consume oil and propane. The amount of two hundred and sixty seven thousand four twenty one seventy seven as presented by our Roden Bridge.
Like that motion, so.
Okay, movement second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, passes. Three to zero.
Then the other, uh, only other topic I have around now is the intrusion of the right of way. Which I. Had added on, since we were already here, so. Joe and I had talked on the phone, who was talking about the properties, which mentioned it before, about the. The intrusion of, of private property on setting on our right of way. And I know the first, I've been trying to make, uh, contact with one of these individuals and haven't yet, but. I know for clarity, I wanna. Before I talk with them, I know that this is gonna come up, it's like. Why am I, there's so many other properties that this is happening to. Why am I the one that's being picked on, that, that type of thing, so are, are we? Going to make it a countywide push to. Clean these properties or is it gonna be as, as needed or how, I mean, what's the process that we're gonna go to? Try to do other properties the same way.
So for my district, when I made aware of someone in the right of way, I've been contacting them. Um, I had two after the last snowstorm, um, that were brought up. Because obviously when we're out blading snow and different things, it's like, oh gosh, this has become an issue, right? And so having those conversations, um, and both of those owners were very great on the phone. Understood the concern, understood the safety and assured me they were gonna get them cleaned up. Um, I went by one yesterday and it hadn't been cleaned up, I didn't get out to the other one, but I followed up with both of them in writing to say. Hey, there's another storm coming, just wanting to make sure what we talked about, you know, you're actually. So, you know, gonna, gonna do those things. And then I think if, if we don't get action beyond that, then it's another conversation of a step forward where. You know, Mr. Henderson has to help, but. The conversations went great and most of them are like, yeah, I gotta get that out of there, you know, it. You know, whether it's, they're in a hurry and they stop and, you know.
But we are as a commission, we're, we're gonna make a push to get these cleaned up. And then also what if, or can they go ha- hand in hand with the nuisance ordinances or is that just something? Leave completely.
I think that's separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
I think road right of ways are road right of ways and, I mean, it's posing a risk to the folks out cleaning and trying to get people out and.
Poses a risk to the traveling public, if they run off the road, there's no clear zone in the right of way, there's nothing and they hit those objects.
Speaking of that, Pat, if there's a, if there is a paper trail and, you know, hey, conversations, emails saying. You know, we made you aware, you're in our right of way, if they're, forbid, there is an accident. Is that liability still on the county when the owners were made aware that they're in our right of way and posing a risk to?
Our liabilities determined under the Kansas Tour Claims Act. And generally, uh, there, there's an exception to liability for things that require. Um, an officer to use discretion or. An employee to use discretion about how to proceed and that's going to include almost all enforcement actions. About making people comply with. With the, uh. In this situation, the requirements of staying off of the right of way. Uh, just like a, a police officer wouldn't necessarily be liable for not writing a ticket to a speaker who was involved in that. That said, depending on the facts, what happens in hypothetical accident, it's pretty likely that we'd be included as a defendant in the lawsuit. And the courts would determine whether or not, under the Kansas Tour Claims Act, we are viable, but. Generally, we're not liable for decisions that we make about whether to enforce or how to enforce a law.
So would your recommendation be, like, I, I don't anticipate. Them not to comply because everyone I talked to was very open to, like, we understand, we'll get it cleaned up type deal, we'll get it moved. But in the instances of, of not seeing action. Is that something that comes back to us and you as our attorney or does that go to law enforcement to? Like who put, who is in charge of the right of ways for enforcement?
There, there's two sides on, on it, there's a, a criminal enforcement and then there's civil. Remedies and then civil would come with, I would be involved with and criminal would either be the. The sheriff issuing a ticket or the county attorney filing a formal charge. I, that said. My understanding from all the time I've worked for the, the Board of County Commissioners is that the. The driving force isn't so much what's going to make us not viable or viable, it's what's the safest thing, what's the best thing to do for the public and I. I, I think that's, uh, that's where the judgment comes in, is, is this a. Dangerous enough situation that it warrants further action.
Okay, so if we feel it's not like, it's not and it's just gonna be damage to our plow or, or whatever. Then there's no action really do.
Right, that would be up to you.
Okay.
If you wanted to press that issue.
Okay. Interesting.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I don't know, I'm hopeful, but the two I talked to are gonna see remedy.
Your technique was to reach out to your constituents. That seemed to work. Um, you could do that in conjunction with some kind of a letter, I would assume too, if that's, if it's necessary, if you can't reach. An individual by phone or some other, then a, a, a letter stating that. We tried to reach you and we have been able to, but this is, this is what we need you to do.
And that's one of the things I've learned from being in the county of, um, even when I have those conversations and they're great. I follow up in writing because how many times have we been on a road and someone's like, well, the previous commission told me this. And it's like, I wanna have something so that it's in writing, so that you, everybody can see like. On this day, on this day, I, I tried really hard to just have an easy like, hey, can you help us out here and get your stuff off the right of way, like it's. It doesn't have to turn into something negative, we just need your help, like.
Quick question on that though, is there any record though, of you making that contact, that, that would be my. Question, so that was kind of a. First interaction on the subject, but wasn't recorded on, on either end.
At the county end, like.
Right, so I, yes, so I send it to my email and typically I'll forward it on to the department, so there's a. There's a record, there will be records that way. But hopefully, it doesn't need to be forwarded on, if I have the phone call and have it in writing and then I drive out and it's been taken care of, it's like, huh, we're done, like.
A lot of times it's habitual, it'll start to show back up again. It's kind of the same way with, uh, the nuisance properties, you know, some of them have been cleaned up through the years and then. It gets lax again in the future, so.
Which my nuisance properties, that's another conversation, I'd like to have some time with you guys. Just some of it's a little too far gone, just expect it.
So it's not a right way issue, it's a nuisance.
Yeah, I think they're two different thi- discussions, I think, and all you care about is right of way, like that's.
Well, you know, the, the right of way, you know, we need clear zones where we can. So if people run off the road, they can get off the road. Uh, if we want to plow snow, mow the roadside, do anything in those places. It makes it almost impossible for that to happen and I think there is a statute about.
Intrusions in the right of way.
Yeah, K S A sixty-eight H five seventy-five. It's unlawful to obstruct any portion of the public highway. Including the right of way.
So typically, what I've found is if you start talking like that to people, they're gonna be like.
No.
I'm not moving myself.
No, I under- I understand that, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that there is a statute that.
There is legal standing.
There is legal standing there, it's not just we're picking on somebody. So, but I do understand, you know, uh when we talk to these individuals. Uh being cordial and and going through the motion like we would wanna be. Uh treated as the way we should start it, but then I also wanted you to know that there is a. There is a statute saying that this is is not supposed to happen, don't go park something on the state right away, I promise you. It won't be there. They they do not allow it at all and ours are are just as important.
So it won't be there, so the state.
The state, the state, it will be removed fairly quickly, they don't, they don't mess around, they'll get hold of the person and then. I mean, it's just like the hay bales when they do the right of way, they can only be on there so many days. From the time they're bailed, so I mean, it's it's important. That we do the best we can to to be as clean as we can on our. On our right of way, so we're trying to mow them now. You know, this year we've made, I think, every road. Uh and we wanna continue that, and if if there's items in the right of way, it makes it very challenging to get that done also, because the mowing helps with the snow. A lot of times it won't, you know, the the grass won't cause the, you know, like a snow fence to drift into the road, so.
So do we have the authority to remove things on our right of way?
Yes. Yes.
Cause I just wonder if that's more effective than a civil penalty, right, like? Because we've seen those where we send the letters of. Here's a possible misdemeanor fine and we get ignored, we've, you know, in other instances, and it's like, okay, well, if we remove this stuff. Then. It solves the problem and.
But Pat, wouldn't you have to follow the steps, so you'd have to go. Notification civil and then.
All of this would depend on the specifics of the situation, uh you know, we we've had one area where we had a. Half a mile it seemed of just equipment that was parked in the the right of way. That would be very difficult for our road and bridge department and and it's, of course, it's gonna be you guys that are forced to do it. Cars would do it. That would have been very difficult for us to remove. All that equipment, sure, like if we're talking about the. You know, just a a parked car or something, yes, that's pretty easy to for us to move when we can and and do. It's all gonna depend on the the circumstances.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to think that we're out here picking on anybody, we just have some situations that I I feel like are unsafe. So that's, that's why we're, we're talking about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, notices in communications. Um introductions and consideration of resolutions, no executive sessions that I'm aware of.
Uh, any K A Anderson?
So they're next week.
Actually, two weeks.
What are that, two weeks?
Oh, two weeks, alright.
Okay, so. Unfinished business for next week. Um before um, do we have any items you guys that are unfinished that we need to be on your agenda for next week? Um so so far next week, we have. Okay, so next week we have. What time is the sports complex? That's the only thing we have for next week. Oh, I was just using your spreadsheet.
Yeah, but I I haven't transferred that one. Over from the old to the new and I don't have the part the.
Clark drive down.
I have the quick drive, but I don't have.
Oh, commission drive.
Commission drive, so.
Let let me pull that up. And that's in twenty twenty-five commission meeting? Twenty twenty-five agenda, yeah. So the eighteenth, we just have the sports complex so far. Um and and how many minute, how long do we feel like that conversation with Mr. Erickson? Can we, do you think we could go ahead and add Effingham if they're willing, like we could do them both at the same time, that would be helpful probably. If they would be willing to come give an update on that. So we have it. Department finance. For sports complex updates. So we have Scott Erickson coming, what do you think, how long?
Forty-five minutes.
How much?
Forty-five minutes, you think?
I think about two an hour, I would think.
Okay. I'm just gonna do the commission drive and let you. Yep.
Scott Erickson's sports. What did you say, how many minutes?
Forty-five. Do we wanna have a review of the one page? One pager for County Lake? And that could be ten minutes? Like if we have. County one pager. I apologize, I think you gave us this information, but when do we start with? Department heads.
So. I think uh any anytime from March to. April, May.
Okay.
Um. I think it's important to to visit with the board first to kind of gauge. Hours, cause I haven't sent anything to departments um other than. A meeting with the board, we're gonna go over like some preliminary twenty-six numbers. But like I haven't. I haven't given any direction to them about. I mean, you can go ahead and start your process, it's open now, but. I don't wanna have them go through a lot of work if the board is saying, don't increase anything.
Right, no, absolutely, I think it's good.
They would input, put in what it takes to run their department and then we're just gonna have to back it out, so.
I agree, having time with you to go through it all prior to would save everybody time. Effort and heartache even to think they're gonna see this and then end up getting slashed to slashed at the.
Well, yeah, that's one thing, like they could, if the board is saying, keep the numbers the same, they can keep the numbers the same, then when they come visit with you. Talk about what that's gonna do if that happens and then adjust it from there.
Okay.
Um instead of. Putting in a whole bunch of inflated stuff and then coming to talk and you said, no, we need to keep it the same, then they have to go back and slash it all.
Okay.
Like it. Just trying to be mindful of every time to work.
Um, okay, so maybe we could talk to you about that. The Rollins Road and the bridge selection. For you. You wanna do the drive first. To go see them and then selection, I'm just trying to get some of our unfinished business for commissioners. To get it on our agenda, so we know dates to what to expect, so if we plan to take the road trip next week. Is that fine? We could even, you know, end like, okay, we're going at eleven A M or whatever time, eleven, you know. Pick a time, go look at the bridges and then give ourselves um. Time to then give you your answers on the bridges on the twenty-fifth. That's another thing, on the twenty-fifth, we're gonna select the Northeast Kansas Health Department Board members. So we put out, I got with Christina Rowan and we put out uh an advertisement. To ask for people to submit letters of interest.
On for the both positions.
Yes, for both positions, it's been published as of last week. And I put on there, we, the board would select on the twenty-fifth, and the reason that timeline is the first Monday in March is our first meeting. So we wanna make sure we select them and they have time before their first meeting, all of our first meetings.
Yeah.
Um so I need to add that on there too. I got it, oh, thank you. Um. Trying to think, these are good things, so, okay, so we'll take the. Drive by off system, on system bridges next week with Joe, a lot, how long time do you need?
I don't think it will, it'll take that long.
An hour?
I would be more than that.
Oh, it's gonna take longer than that, and I just wanted to make aware too, the first week of March, I'm going to uh Noxious Weed. Uh school and it's where I keep my, Ben and I get our uh. Continuing in.
Okay.
So I have to. Have to be calling that week, maybe Monday through Thursday.
So you need two hours next week?
Probably for us to get where we need to go.
Okay, so if we go next week. And we plan on leaving at noon. And going on a road trip till two.
Yeah.
Is that fine with you guys? And then that'll allow us to see the bridges and to send you our recommendations for. Cop, yeah, which ones you wanna apply for, we'll have that conversation on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
First selection of off system, on system bridge.
Yeah.
Good?
That'll be.
Um and then. Pat's tax sale hearing is this Friday, so you should have an update on the eighteenth for tax sale, okay. So we'll add that.
Unfinished?
Um no, that can just be new business.
Okay.
Patrick Henderson tax sale. What do you think, ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
Do you wanna? Problem?
Okay. Um what else are we forgetting, guys?
Maybe Susan could give us an update on what she has sent out to township's.
Yes, an update on that next week, and then do you want your finalized township agenda done to be able to send out next week? Joe, like if we have any other recommendations next week?
Need to send it out as soon as possible.
Okay, so by, we'll tell you, if there's anything we wanna add, she'll get her stuff sent out, give us an update, next Tuesday, you can send.
Yeah.
Here it is.
Cause the sooner it gives them, you know.
Yep. Okay. Um, sorry, I'm looking at my email, anything else we're forgetting? I think that's really all I know of. So. Hey. You, you good with everything?
Yeah, I got it all in there and then just new things I can add.
Good, perfect. Alright, so I would look for uh.
Uh Casey.
Yes.
Is there any way we could have a workshop after the meeting today, if you guys have time?
So the commission is going to adjourn into a commissioner workshop, uh we do need to meet with the finance director and then we have one with the sheriff at one, but yes. If you know, if you have some things.
I, it won't take that long, but I do have some things I need to discuss.
Okay. So I look for a motion to adjourn into commissioner workshop.
So move. Say.
Movement second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass these three to zero.